Move up the interviews before presentations, or you want to?
What do you guys think? Move it ahead?
I guess it's probably easier for people.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine.
Okay. If you don't have any other public, I'll go ahead and join him on this and keep him silent if you want to do PGAC interviews first.
Yeah, great. Okay, we realized that we had some difficulty with our sound, so we will pick up where we left off. One thing I neglected to mention when we started the meeting is that Mayor McAllister and Councilman Cohen are unable to be with us tonight, and that's the reason that I'm standing in and chairing the meeting tonight. Yes, and we are going to make a change to the order of the agenda. We're going to hold off on the presentations and reports and proceed directly to the first item of new business, which is the appointments to the Parks and Greenways Advisory Committee and to the Planning Board of Adjustment. I'd like to welcome first, our first person to interview is Adam Smith, who is interviewing for the PGAC. Adam, welcome, and can you hear us okay?
Can you hear me?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're going to take turns asking questions, and we've got, all of us have paper in front of us and notes to take if you would like. So, we're glad you're here. We thank you for applying, and we will start with Councilman Thornton.
Hello.
Thank you for having me.
Oh, thank you for stepping up. What is your interest in volunteering for the Parks and Greenways Advisory Committee?
Well, mostly I want to give back. I want to give back to the community through my experience and passion for recreation, specifically in our area. You know, I grew up in Asheville, and then I spent my adult career out west in Colorado and California, and I learned many things working for many different organizations in that time period, and I'd love to bring some of my experience back here now that I've moved back home. Been back in Woodfin for the past two years, and I just have a strong desire to be a part of the community and contribute my skills and abilities to make our community the best that it can be.
Thank you.
Adam, this is Ken Khan, another council member. Could you share with the knowledge or experience that you think would benefit the work of the PGAC?
Yeah, absolutely. So, as I said, I grew up in Asheville, born and raised. My mom's family has been in this area since the 1700s. And I went to Appalachian State University. Prior to that, I went into Carolina Day School, actually with Eric. We were on the same track and field team. I was one year ahead of him. And after Carolina Day, I went to Appalachian State, and I got my degree in Recreation Management, concentrating on outdoor experiential education. After I graduated from App State, I moved out west to Colorado, and I taught skiing there for the Aspen Skiing Company for seven seasons. In the summer, I was a raft guide and a mountain bike guide for a company called Blazing Adventures. And then I moved to California, and I was there for about eight and a half years. In California, I did many different jobs. I worked for an environmental education center called Nature Bridge. I worked for the East Bay Regional Park District as a recreation leader, doing kayak trips, all different types of bike programs for kids. I worked with youth in Richmond, California, which is an underserved population. And then I met my ultimate job there, which was as the program manager for a program called Trips for Kids Marin, which is this mountain biking organization that specifically set up to serve underserved kids in the Bay Area. So, I was the program manager for six and a half years. And then, over COVID, I decided I need to up my skills and up my game, so I went back to school. I went to the Dominican University of California, and I got my MBA over COVID for two years there in Santa Fe, California. And then we moved back here to Asheville. So, I worked in the recreation fields for about 13 years over that time span. I have a degree in Recreation Management, and I have an MBA. And I'm currently on the board at two of those organizations that I work for. I'm on the Board of Directors at Trips for Kids Marin, and I'm also on the board at Roaring Fork Cycling when I lived in Aspen. This is a similar organization to Trips for Kids, a youth cycling organization, and I'm on the board there as well. So, I think with all of that experience that I have, and already serving on two boards, I understand how boards work, and I feel I'm a valuable asset to this community.
Thank you. Great answer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Next.
Hey, Adam. As it relates to the work of the PGAC, what do you think should be the highest priority for the town of Woodfin post Tropical Storm Helene?
Well, really, I think clearing up our riverways, the river and the Riverside Drive area. You know, unfortunately, the beautiful parks that we had just built really destroyed. I haven't actually been down to look at them in person much, other than just driving by, but I know they were damaged incredibly. So, I think cleaning that area and then looking ahead to the future, how can we rebuild and revegetate that area in a more resilient way to potential storms of the future? Of course, they're going to keep coming, and floods will continue to happen. So, how can we build infrastructure that's going to withstand potential new storms? And then, how can we potentially use that? It may have cleared out some of that area, and how can we leverage that area that is potentially already cleared to develop beautiful parks along our river there? And I know that is in the master plan, and I know that that has already been worked on. And I think taking a look at how we can again make them more resilient to future storms, and then beautify the area for generations to come, would be the primary number one goal.
Good.
Thank you.
So, hi. So, thanks. Thank you, Melissa, you've all said. Thanks for putting your name in the hat and being willing to serve.
Of course.
My question is, is what do you believe you can bring to the board that the others cannot bring?
Well, I don't know who the others are. I'm sure that they are also wonderful applicants as well. But I will say, I have been very good at serving on the boards at both of these organizations as problem solving. My mind just seems to be good at that. When we're faced with a problem, I come up with a solution that is often implemented and often effective. And I really enjoy that process of, you know, facing a problem and becoming up with a solution. So, I think that's just one of my greatest strengths. Of course, we always face problems. We've got challenges, especially post-Helene. And I'd love to put that ability to work to help solve the issues that we're facing. It just seems to come naturally to me, just something that I'm good at. And I think that really sets me apart. My voice seems to be very respected and very listened to on both of the boards that I serve at. So, I'm glad I can offer that to them. I'd love to do the same thing here.
Do you have an example that you can give us, without putting you too much on the spot there, but I'm sure you have something that you can pull from? Can you give us an example?
Yeah. No, that's fine. I mean, just for example, just in my last board meeting, we were thinking about fundraising for Roaring Fork Cycling, and they're trying to bring in more money, of course, as all nonprofits are. You know, we were signing up for summer camp programs for the kids, summer camp program, and I, you know, they were saying, well, how can we bring in more money? And I said, well, hey, what about we add a, you know, donate now button underneath the pay button, so when you sign your kid up, how about you can also sponsor another kid in the valley who hasn't, perhaps doesn't have the financial means to join us? So, you can sign your kid up, of course, in the Roaring Fork Valley, Colorado, if you have people who can afford it, and then they can also sponsor another kid. Kind of like paying it forward, like the idea of you going to a pizza store and you buy a slice of pizza for the person behind of you. And they just love that idea. Right off the bat, they were like, oh, my gosh, I'm going to put that on the website immediately. So, that was just something in my last meeting that I came up with, and they immediately implemented, and it will hopefully lead to more kids being able to participate. So, in most of my meetings, when we're faced with a problem like that, I seem to be able to come up with some creative solutions to the issue we're facing.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. We appreciate you taking the time to do this with us tonight, and we will be certainly back in touch.
Well, thank you so much for having me. Have a wonderful meeting, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
There we go.
It's very punctuated.
Hi, Melissa. Come right on in, if you would. Just, I would like you right there by the podium, if you don't mind. That way, the microphone can pick up. We appreciate you being here and applying for this committee spot, and we're going to each take turns asking a question. And if you need to ask us anything or anything repeated, please say so, and we will start with Councilman Thornton.
Thank you for stepping up. We appreciate it. What's your interest in volunteering for the Parks and Greenways Advisory Committee?
Well, I'm a longtime Woodfin resident. I've lived here for 22 years. So, I was here in 2016 when the bond initiatives were passed, and I was one of the folks that was very happy to vote for it at the time. I was excited about it then, and I'm excited about it now. So, if there are things that I can do to help be a part of the success of those initiatives, as we're getting closer to the finish line on those projects, I want to be a part of that. All right. Thank you.
Melissa, I'm Ken Khan. I forgot my badge. Can you share knowledge or experience that you have that you think would specifically benefit the work of the PGAC?
I think my knowledge and experience is generally in business administration. That's my professional background. I don't necessarily have, you know, public works, public policy experience in any sense. I've been active with certain volunteer organizations in the community, you know, work with boards from time to time, so that experience may be helpful. But mostly, just a passionate community member.
I'm next. I'm Eric Edgerton. Nice to meet you. As it relates to the work of the PGAC, what do you think should be the highest priority for the town post-Helene in the wake of the hurricane?
I don't know if I have a full assessment to know exactly what the highest priority should be, but as it relates to the parks initiatives, I think that there's a variety of areas that are in progress now. And so, I think seeing those to fruition, understanding that the timelines and the budgets would certainly be impacted by Helene. There's no way it couldn't have been. You know, which one is the highest priority and what exactly needs to happen in those initiatives? I'm not close enough to it to have formed an opinion on that.
Thank you.
I'm a slow note taker. So, hi there. I'm Johanna. I want to know what it is that you believe that you have that's extra, that you can bring to the board that perhaps someone else, who else is applying, might not have?
I'm generally a very committed, dedicated individual. When I set my mind to a project that I'm interested in, I'm happy to dedicate the energy and time to see it through. So, for example, I made a point of looking at what the 2025 meeting dates were and ensuring that I could be available for each of those meeting dates on the calendar, which I can. So, again, just that willingness to put the energy and time in to help support these initiatives where I can.
Thank you.
That's all the questions we have.
All right.
Short and sweet, and we appreciate you applying, and we will certainly be back in touch with you.
All right.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Katie. If you'll step up to the podium there and tell us your name, and we're going to ask you a few questions. And wanted to say a tremendous thank you for applying for this committee spot. It just makes us all really happy to know that there are this many people that are interested in working with and and for Woodfin, so thank you for being here. We're going to take turns asking questions, and if you need anything repeated or have any questions for us, please ask. Councilman Thornton?
Thank you for coming forward. Here's your first question. What is your interest in volunteering for the Parks and Greenways Advisory Committee?
Interested to help promote more green spaces in our town. I am particularly interested in gardens and parks from my work with the Woodfin Community Garden Steering Committee, and I definitely have visions of, you know, being able to promote more gardens after we get the initial one up and running and it's successful. Also, thinking about the ways that people can recreate and have places to do outdoor activities and not have to go outside of Woodfin is something that is important to me.
Thank you.
Let me ask, what specific knowledge or experience do you have that you think would be particularly helpful on the PGAC?
Well, I guess my experience with the Community Garden Steering Committee, and I've been on the Bountiful Cities Board for two and a half years. So, I might work with them, and in the past, I have helped start a garden where I work. I've also worked on organic farm in the past, and I did work for Parks and Recreation in the city of Tampa for a little while with their after-school program, so I have some experience like engaging with youth and educational programming. So, I guess those are all the things I would bring.
A quick follow-up. Can you say a little more about Bountiful Studies? I should know them, but I don't.
Yeah, they work to promote food resiliency in the Asheville area, and so they support, they're like one of the main supporters for community gardens, and then they also support a program that's in the public schools called Feast, and it helps expose students to food, how food grows, and integrates it into the curriculum.
As it relates to the work of the PGAC, what do you think should be the highest priority for the town post Tropical Storm Helene?
I think, you know, continuing to support people in cleanup and rebuilding is probably the top priority. And then, after that, you know, moving on to things that are going to help sort of make Woodfin a funner, more beautiful place, right? Adding in more green spaces and giving consideration to places that could be expanded into something that is usable by people rather than just an empty space.
Thank you.
What do you believe that you have to bring to the table that others may not have? What quality do you think that you have that maybe others don't?
I would say, I mean, again, not to be a broken record, but my work with the Community Garden, I think I would bring that and being a connector to that work, a connector between the Parks and Greenway Advisory Committee and the gardens, and collaborating on things that could be beneficial to both. You know, maybe like workdays, volunteer workdays, and just so being a connector in that way, I think I could offer that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That is all we have for you. We appreciate you again putting in your name for consideration, and we will be back in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. How do you want to proceed?
We can go on to the next set of interviews and then do a discussion on the board.
I've got a question because everybody seemed thoroughly qualified and would seem to bring distinct positive things to that board.
And different things, yes.
Yes. I don't see an ordinance where we ever establish this board, and so I don't know that we're constrained by any sort of numerical limit that we think may or may not have existed. So, or if it had, we could certainly change that whenever we want. So, what I was getting at is I don't see any reason why we could not, if we all agree that all three of the applicants are qualified and would be helpful appointing all three.
Yeah.
What's the current composition?
No idea.
I agree in principle. I worry about, I don't know how that board functions, so if we don't want it to be.
That was the only concern I had, is if staff thinks that that would create any unintended consequences, it might be negative.
I'm not sure if it's, they do have rules of procedure, and I don't know if that talks about the composition.
It does. I think it states that I want to look at it.
But I think, getting to Eric's point, I don't think there's any code provision about it either, so there isn't. It is purely the town council's, you know, agency for what advisory input that it has for you, and if you want to expand it, I think.
Yeah. This feels like just kicking it over the fence a bit, but if we agree on all three and let them figure out how they want to actually run their meetings, that's fine.
Yeah. To a person, every single one had a distinct value that they would add.
I would, I agree. I would hate to see any of them escape.
It's a good term.
We'd like to rephrase that.
No, I'm good. It takes the pressure off of them if someone is sick or other, you know, other kind of.
And I mean, we can't do this with the board. We can't do it with the Board of Adjustment because we have an ordinance setting that out.
Right.
But here we have flexibility, and it just seems like a.
So, quorum would be five instead of four? Is there any reason to believe that that additional person would impact?
All right. Do we need a motion for this? Is that, Eric, would you like to make that?
I'd move to appoint Adam Smith, Melissa Drennan, and Katie Cox to the Parks and Greenway Advisory Committee, and further that, to the extent there are any rules of procedure or other constraints, that those are hereby amended to allow for the additional candidates to be appointed to the board.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Good job, Eric.
They did bring different perspectives.
That's a great idea.
It is. I didn't know.
There's so much work ahead for them, too. In so many different.
Each three had different interests. Their interests were.
Yeah, very varied.
I'm going to start drinking Coke, because it seems to.
Mr. Barton, how are you tonight?
I'm good. Hi again.
We appreciate you being here and your interest in this role.
Of course.
We've got a few questions to ask you. Feel free to stop us if we're not making sense, or you need clarification, or provide other information, and we're going to take turns asking questions. Not really difficult, but please stop us if you have any questions.
If you confuse me, I'll let you know.
All right. Councilman Thornton, if you will start.
First question.
Awesome.
What is your interest in volunteering for the Planning Board of Adjustment?
I have seen what terrible zoning has done in Buncombe County, and we haven't done that yet, and I want to make sure that we keep it that way.
Could you give me an example?
Massive infill development. We don't have that here, and hopefully, we won't have that here.
Okay.
Let me expand a little bit more.
Sure. Yes.
Infill development causes an insane lack of pervious surfaces. It causes increased density, and luckily, we don't have those issues here because we haven't allowed people to go through with conditional zoning and develop someone's backyard into a flat pole lot. Everything here is pretty much still neighborhoodly, and if you compare it to some of the development that you see on like side roads off of Haywood Road, something like Hanover State Street, Sand Hill, there's not many areas in this town, if any, I can think of off the top of my head, where you can reach over and touch your neighbor's house. It's better for the environment, it's better for the community, and it's better for affordable housing that way.
Does anybody else have a question for Mr. Barton?
I'm sure we're cutting off any.
No, you're fine. Go ahead.
I don't know whether to call you Chip or Max. I didn't know that.
You can call me whatever you want. Just don't call me after 10. I'll be asleep.
Mr. Barton, what knowledge or experience do you have that you think would benefit the Planning Board of Adjustment?
15 years of background in construction. The majority of that being spec homes, seeing what sells, what doesn't sell, what is worth changing zoning to allow on the market, what should not be allowed on the market, what should be favored. Whenever you are working for people who build houses based on speculation and put them on the market, and then they sit for a while, you realize very quickly what types of homes should or should not be allowed preferential treatment whenever it comes to asking for zoning variations. So, doing that for 15 years and pretty much always being interested in construction and development in some capacity, and living through this area my entire life, including what happened in 2008, and seeing an abundance of developments like the one especially off of Old Marshall Highway that sat because it was, it was, it was overdeveloped right before the economy fell apart. And that development sat for, I believe, about a decade before it finally stabilized. So, that's another, that's another really important thing is with how precariously perched our local economy is, making sure that we keep the gates closed for developers who do not have our best interest in mind. Because I'm sure it's not going to shock any of you, that the longer that this goes on and the more people become disenfranchised by it, the more interest in out-of-state developers and hedge funds we're going to have. And eventually, they're going to want to develop something that no one around here has the ability to, and that will remove viable and affordable housing from people in this area. We need to make sure that those floodgates stay firmly closed while we recover from this as well.
Afternoon.
Hey, buddy.
As it relates to the work of the Planning Board of Adjustment, what do you think should be the highest priority for the town of Woodfin, specifically post Tropical Storm Helene?
Affordable housing. The majority of housing that was lost is insane. Damage is insane, and one of the biggest factors that people are not considering is interest rates right now. So, if you moved into this area and you locked in or refied at a, at a stable rate, if your house is totally damaged, you can sell that lot at a massively discounted price right now. You can take your insurance settlement, and you will move somewhere else because you cannot afford to live in this town anymore. What you could buy at a two and a half, three and a half interest rate, you cannot buy at a seven. So, the biggest thing is going to be preserving this area for the people who are here. Thank you.
Hi there. What do you believe that you have to bring to the board that is different than those others who are applying for the position?
I would say a direct, a direct connection to what zoning results in. I would say a direct, a direct connection to what zoning results in, which is the actual building of houses, the selling of houses. I don't actually sell, I'm not a realtor, but my entire line of work depends on the house getting sold and moving on to the next one. So whenever I see what works and what doesn't work, it gives me a little bit more of an advantage, I feel. Anyone can sit down and say this works good on paper, but I use my hands to actually make it materialize. And when it doesn't materialize, I feel it because I go do jobs for other people instead of the person that made that bad decision. Also, I've been here my entire life, and I like the fact that we still have a lot of trees here. I like the fact that we don't have massive gaudy picket fence developments here. I like the fact that it feels like a small town, and I would like to keep it that way. So I would say, short answer is, little bit more of a finger on the pulse than I believe most people would have, and just a greater, potentially a greater appreciation than most people have.
Thank you.
One more, just because you mentioned the, having a sense of where the market is lying currently, I wonder if we can just get some free information. What, what is that? What is your, your sense of what the market factor is, is most demanding right now in terms of like what size home?
What size home?
Yeah.
If you're wanting to sell something that's a little bit more expensive, keep it below 750. If you're wanting to sell something affordable, keep it between 375 and 425. The notion of the COVID homes where you were able to put a house on the market for three-quarter to 1.5 and a cash buyer comes in here, that's gone. That was, that was dying before the storm and it's completely gone after this. And even in those price ranges, one house of seven has sold since the storm that I've been directly related to, two have had showings, one has had an offer. So sell one, look at two, make an offer on one out of seven, in Buncombe County, that's abnormal.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
I have another question. Could I get your opinion on the comprehensive plan that we adopted last year?
You're gonna have to refresh my memory on that one.
Oh. Well, it's a multi-page document explaining what our goals are as a town, where we want to build, and what the goal should be for building. That's a very general description, and all towns and counties have one.
Yeah, yeah.
Supposedly. And so I just wanted to get, you sound very passionate about the direction that you want to see us go in, so I thought maybe you could share your opinion on that plan, but I'll get back to you if you're not ready for that question.
If I remembered that plan, I would be more than happy to, but unfortunately, we've had some things happen since then, and the nuance has slipped my mind, but feel free, you know, you have my email, feel free to send it, send it over to me and I can answer any question that you have.
I will.
But knowing who's on the zoning board here and knowing pretty much who's on the town, I think that everyone's pretty like-minded. There were several projects that were shut down very early on that I think should have been shut down, so I don't think you guys are going to be too far off the mark with your plan.
Okay.
Comparatively to what was on the docket.
Previous.
Previously.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, I think I understand your point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anybody else?
I think that's it, thank you.
Will we wait around, or will you call us?
You can circle back, you're welcome to stay, but we can also just email you, you know, after they've done celebrating, we may have to stay.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks again for applying.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
They are.
Little tree trunks.
She's not gonna sneak up.
Smack in the ground.
What does?
Those are her shoes.
Shannon's shoes.
Oh.
You hear her coming.
There you go.
Up here on the... Mayor Vahan, if you would please step up to the podium there, we have a few questions for you. We're glad you're here, thank you for applying, and we're going to take turns asking a few questions.
Appreciate the warning.
Yes, good. If you don't understand us, can't hear us, have your own questions, feel free, please. And we will start with Councilman Thornton.
Hello, welcome back. What's your interest in volunteering for the Planning Board of Adjustment?
Well, I understand, having been on this side of the room for so many years, you know how important it is that you've got somebody on the planning board that gets input from the board, because ultimately, it's your responsibility as to what goes on. And I felt like, being retired now, I had time to devote to the planning board, and understanding problems that may come up, or how've come up in the past, and could be an asset to the board.
Thank you.
I have a question, this, this one, this one's a hard one to ask. What knowledge or experience do you have that might benefit the work of the Planning Board of Adjustment?
Well, other than being the mayor for 20 years and going through a lot of that, still, even with, with my background with Buncombe County for 47 years, being Emergency Services Director, was involved in disasters and that type planning, and which offers kind of a unique experience in the case of something like the flood we're just going through.
Thank you.
And MSD too, you're, you're still Chair of MSD, right? So there's that as well.
Good point.
Third question is, as it relates to the work of the Planning Board of Adjustment, what do you think should be the highest priority for the town post-Tropical Storm Helene?
To be able to avoid as much of that danger as is possible, and of course, you know, even from you of the city of Asheville, you know what everybody's facing, and it's going to be impossible to completely wipe that slate clean, but we've got to look to the future and make sure that what development we have, or whatever, is not susceptible to immediate flooding like what we just went through. You know, they say that was a thousand-year flood, but that thousand years started the day after the flood too, so you've got to think about what can you do to make Woodfin a safer community, and even how it ties in with Asheville and Weaverville.
Hello. What do you believe you bring that is different than what others will bring to the position?
What do I bring what?
What, what do you, what do you bring that's different? What's special that you bring, that you can bring, that the others cannot bring?
I think I bring a lot of experience that I've had, like I just mentioned, with disaster part of it, looking at floods and other type natural disasters to help prevent those, and how to make them, after you've had one, make sure that the people that need help get the help, and they get it right away, and it's not delayed and strung out a long time.
Thank you.
That is it. Those are our questions.
Okay.
We appreciate you applying, and we will get back to you shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. You're just jealous.
I am, I'm gonna get myself some of those. Can you all make fun of me?
Hello, Mr. Carr, thank you for applying and for coming here tonight and letting us ask you a few questions. If you can't understand us, need more clarification, have questions for us, just say so. And we've got a few questions for you, and we will start with Councilman Thornton.
Hello, welcome. What's your interest in volunteering for the Planning Board of Adjustment?
My interest in volunteering is to get more involved in civics in Woodfin. My wife and I have lived here for about two years, and I have some experience in planning and zoning and those sorts of fields, and I would like to help the town of Woodfin as it continues to grow and think about the future, and I think it would be a great use of my experience to, to help in this way, so.
All right, thank you.
That's a great segue, thank you for stepping up. Can you talk a little bit about your knowledge and experience, particularly as you think it would benefit the Planning Board of Adjustment?
Sure. So I've worked in the planning field, city planning field, for over five years. I have a master's degree in urban and regional planning, certified as a planner by the American Institute, the American Planning Institute, as a AICP planner. And so I have experience and kind of depth of knowledge and breadth of knowledge in planning and kind of civic issues. And I've been working in, I worked in local government and the planning department for a few years, now I work with local governments around the country in a consulting position. So that's, that's kind of my experience and some of, some of the knowledge that I have in the area of planning and zoning.
I've got the next question, but before I get to that, I want to go into a little bit more depth on the work that you do, because I read in your application that you particularly advise local governments about how their development choices impact the town or county's long-term financial health, and I was wondering if you could expound on that a little bit, I wasn't 100% sure what, what you might be referring to there.
Sure. So the company that I work for, we work with cities and counties and towns around the country, looking at their data to understand how their land use and development choices impact their long-term financial health. The information that we typically work with is parcel data, so related to property tax revenue, also looking at sales tax revenue, or perhaps income tax revenue, kind of just depending on the state, and, and how local governments fund themselves. Then, so we'll help them understand how kind of different development patterns impact their, their, their revenue, and then also look at various infrastructure and other kind of spatially relevant costs, to understand how those kind of marry with the revenues, to understand which sorts of land use patterns or development patterns are net positive in terms of revenue generation, or net negative in terms of cost generation for a community.
That's very helpful, thank you. And then the question I'm supposed to ask is, as it relates to the work of the Planning Board of Adjustment, what do you think should be the highest priority specifically in the wake of Hurricane Helene?
That's a good question. I think the, the comprehensive plan that was adopted last February, I think, really put a high, a high point on access to the river and the, the property around the river, making sure that it was, you know, the river's a huge asset for Woodfin. But, you know, I don't think that that should, that focus should be taken away from kind of the long-term goals of the town of making areas along the river accessible, you know, making businesses that are close to the river kind of leverage the opportunity that the, that area provides. But I do think there might need to be some additional thought put into the intensity of development, or how much investment is put in to, to areas, or just mitigating some of the risks, whether it be through site design, development regulations, which, you know, aren't, it's not all just up to the town, there are, you know, federal, federal regulations and things of that nature, but really considering kind of the risks that the flood last year exposed, and being just intentional about future, future development and design of, of future development along the river. Thank you.
So if you could tell me what you believe that you would bring different to the board? Like what's special about you?
I think for me, so I haven't lived here very long, like I mentioned, kind of moved here more recently, and, you know, that, that means I don't have the kind of depth of knowledge of how the community's changed over time, so I'll totally admit that. But I think, especially some of my professional experience, working with local governments in a variety of areas around the country, seeing how different places are doing things to promote positive development, mitigate risks from, from climate change or other natural disasters, and just even more technical things like how places are amending their zoning and land development codes to kind of move in the direction that they want to with their, their development. I think I have that experience that I can bring to the, to the, to the board.
Thank you.
Any other questions? That is it, that is all we have for you. We appreciate you applying, and thank you for coming and answering our questions, and we will get back with you shortly.
Great, thank you all very much for the opportunity, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So can I have a clarification? And this is more, I mean, I kind of know what the answer is, but I think it's probably good to restate what the role of this board that we're voting on, what their role and what they're, what they're supposed to be doing in a, in a given meeting. I think it's important that whomever's watching, understand that, that part before we go any further in our discussion.
I was going to say, which one of you two would like to help us with that?
I agree.
So my first answer to that is, and it picks up on Councilman Thornton's question, is the job of the Planning Board is to take a legislative look at what is advisable about your comprehensive land use plan, and so to guide the direction that you generally think things will go, should go in terms of land use, where, and then they have the flip side of that, is the Board of Adjustment role is quasi-judicial in nature, so they have to have sometimes really, really lengthy hearings where they sit as judge and jury of land use dispute, a matter that's been brought up through your administration and now is appealed to them for a, a decision about whether or not their property rights have been properly accorded to them. So it's got a dual role that's, that's requires some pretty deft handling of what's legislative, what's legal and quasi-judicial, and it results in recommendations to you all when it's legislative in nature, and it results in court cases when it's quasi-judicial. So it's an important role in terms of land use.
So am I correct in understanding that often, most times, they would be implementing rules that already are in existence, as far as... Inter, well, not implementing, because we do the implementing, but they're guiding their opinion based on ordinances or rules that have already been set in place?
So when it comes to the planning matters, they, they serve primarily as an advisory body. So they make a recommendation to the council as it relates to specific development applications and zoning text amendments. So they, there is some interpretation of the, or application of the town standards to those development applications, but those are most oft, oh, and reset, if you asked me this, but those are most often, as far as those development standards go, those are most often conditional zonings. So it's something where they have more breadth and latitudes, so understanding comprehensive plan and goals and objectives is also very valuable, to kind of understand where the town wants to go, and how that application may align with those goals. The other function which isn't, doesn't come up very often, but interestingly, we have an application tonight, it is a more ministerial role in looking at just the technical standards as they apply to subdivisions. So that one doesn't happen as often, but we do have one from time to time. And then the reason is, of course, is, is... And then the reason is of course is, is directly tied to the comprehensive plan, the land use, the future land use plan. It's how we want to, where we want to grow and what the character of those growth periods are.
Thank you. Just thought that that needed to be explained.
Kind of revisited. Yeah, exactly. All right. What is our process for this? Just, just all right. Who would like to say, speak up first?
I'll give you my thoughts because I'm pretty well torn. Because I think that there's a value in both having a deep understanding of our specific area and knowing the development trends historically. And then I think there's also a benefit to having subject matter expertise, like being a certified plant. And I, I'm looking at the current composition of our board and I don't, and I'm, I'm really torn. I think both would be helpful.
Can you say more about the current? I'm not as familiar about the current composition.
With, with some exceptions. I mean, notable exceptions that a lot of our members that we've appointed are not long tenured.
They're new.
Yeah.
They're new residents, so they don't necessarily know the history or the, like where we came from, where we're going.
So that's what I mean by that. It's also true that we don't have anybody with the level of expertise as like being a certified plant. I mean, that's also true. And so I, this is a tough one for me, but.
Sorry, I'm looking at you Ricky, but, um, to a certain extent, and serving on the county planning board. Like when I joined, I didn't know what I was doing, but boy, if you have a good planning staff, it's up to, I think, the planning board. And, uh, same for the board of adjustment when they're separate to rela, you have to lean pretty heavily on the staff and then common sense and a sense of what the comprehensive plan intends for the town. So I, I, I'm sort of torn also, but not maybe not as much as you, because I think the expertise is resident on town staff. And in some senses, uh, not being terribly knowledgeable may be an advantage in some cases. Or you, you don't have specific preconceptions about planning.
Yeah. I appreciate what former Mayor Vehan brings to us as far as his familiarity with the area, um, his experience with emergency services and just the knowledge that he has that has been incredible for us here in Woodfin and helping us move forward as well.
I think it's important.
It's tough.
It is, it's hard, but I, I, I think that given what the area has gone through recently and the amount of growth that happened prior and what is going to come afterwards. Cause I do believe this, we're going to get hit and we're going to get hit very hard with a lot of outside money coming into this area. The amount of development that's going to happen over the next 10 years, I, I, I think we're really underestimating the understanding of that. I think we need someone who understands, uh, the past and the present and what worked or did not work in these huge growth periods. This area has seen waxing and waning of growth and for someone to understand that. Mr. Carr does seem to bring a lot of desirable, except that he doesn't know the history of the area. And I think that that is a very important, um, part that we need to really consider. I really appreciate his, uh, his, his background and the way he presents himself. Uh, I was really appreciative of that. Just not knowing the area and not knowing North Carolina, um, as well, I think is an important part that we need to, um, consider.
If I could add also, I've had conversations with Jerry and I think, um, maybe it was, I was a little surprised at how aligned our vision of what, what might be coming and what is possible were. And that's not to say that's the correct vision, but there's a knowledge base and a depth and an understanding that I think is, is going to be really valuable to us.
And an incredible love for the area and a love for Woodfin. And I think that's a piece to it as well.
I think you guys have convinced me on the, the need for the historical knowledge. I will say that Chip also does have that. I think that the tiebreaker there for me is that Jerry's connection with MSD and, and knowing the constraints that that places on development is, is a big deal. And so I think if we're going for, of the, of the experiential candidates, which one, I think that would be the tiebreaker in my mind. So.
I think the emergency services background.
Emergency services.
That's, that is, that's really relevant when you consider planning considerations.
I'd be happy to make a motion to appoint Jerry Vehan to the planning board of adjustment.
I would like to second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All right. If not, we'll call a vote. All those in favor of appointing Jerry Vehan to the planning board of adjustment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And can we also just maybe, I, I know that nobody else's term is ending up, is ending really soon, but if there's any way to stress to Mr. Carr that we would love for him to reapply at some point?
Please.
Yes, absolutely.
And please give him, give, give him our reasons, please.
Absolutely. All right. Thanks for everybody going through the process, those who applied and those sitting up here.
Well, glad.
It was, uh, a good process and
a good result.
And an excellent result, so. Ricky told me to do that. It's not my fault. All right. So now we will shift back to where we were and, uh, start with our presentations and reports. And the first will be Shannon Tuck, our town manager.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of council. So to begin, um, this month's update, I'd like to begin with a, a quick summary of where things stand with our FEMA public assistance projects. To begin, the RFQs for the stormwater and street repair closed and those interviews are scheduled. We, we went through a selection process where we narrowed the pool down, I think to three firms. And we'll be interviewing those firms next week. The FEMA site inspections for stormwater and streets have been scheduled. In fact, we started today, um, long day today with doing stormwater inspections, primarily culverts all throughout the town. Uh, we have more inspection scheduled tomorrow and then I think, um, one other later in the week. The emergency bank repair in Riverside Park is about thirty, forty percent complete. Weather permitting, we think we're estimating about three weeks to complete the work. We got delayed a little bit with the heavy rain and now this extremely cold weather, but, um, we're looking at the forecast and we think maybe in the next few weeks we'll be ready. Uh, repair to the Coffre Dam is eighty percent complete. Right now, the contractors are working on that emergency repair. So when that boulder wall is complete, they're going to return to the Coffre Dam and they're going to install the waterproof liner, de-water and then begin construction of the wave. So we're looking at about a month or so before we're ready to, to get back into, which is perfect timing for when the contractor wanted to start work. So if, if we can stay on schedule, then we, we may be able to complete the wave in this year. Uh, debris removal is also moving along. The final sweep of the right-of-way debris removal has begun, began last Friday, February fourteenth. It will take a little while for the contractor to move through town and hit every single street and public street and private street that requests it in order to collect that debris. So, uh, they are slowly working their way through. We don't know exactly how long it will take. It depends on, we share some of these contractor resources with, uh, the other municipalities, local governments working in the area. It also depends on weather, so we're not a hundred percent sure. They also get kind of called off to one area to do a little bit of, um, more higher priority collection. And so the, the movement is not as predictable either. So, but that work is underway and should be wrapped up soon. And from what I understand, a lot of the right-of-way debris removal in the area is starting to wrap up. Which is great because now we're shifting to waterways and private property debris collection. So it's not by accident. You start with right-of-ways first and then you kind of move into some of these other more challenging applications. Waterways has been approved. Um, we are just awaiting the complete rights of entry. So every time a contractor wants to enter the waterway, they almost always have to cross private property. So they have to get the proper permissions from the property owners before they complete that work. Similar to private property debris removal, those are, those rights of entry are easier to get. You usually receive those during the application process. But what I'm learning is private property debris removal is new. It's new for FEMA. It's new for the state. So this is something that they're not as familiar with. They don't have a set program. And there's a little bit of, um, back and forth and tugging between what's, uh, qualifies as debris to be removed and what doesn't. So in order for the debris to qualify, it has to be either in a maintained area or it has to be posing a threat to, uh, life, property, infrastructure. So if you have debris in a wooded area, that wouldn't normally qualify. But if that wooded debris can roll down a steep slope onto a road or into a house or onto somebody's, into somebody's deck, uh, or into a stream, anything like that, then that should qualify and should be removed. So, but questions about how far up the hill you go, that sort of thing, those have not been ironed out. So that's all, uh, being worked out right now. And for better or for what, what worse, Woodfin is on the forefront of private property debris. We are ahead of the curve and so we apparently are charting the way. So it's, we're getting the, it's taking us a little longer to get started, but as I mentioned, we're, we're kind of figuring out things as we go. And then lastly, the chipping of the debris material continues and that will continue throughout this process. Our contractors estimate that we have as much or more material in private property debris removal than we do in right-of-way debris removal. So we have just as much to manage coming out of private property. So this is new. The, we learned last week that the state of North Carolina has a hundred million dollars dedicated to providing bridge loans to assist smaller municipalities or municipalities that have challenges with cash flow for these hurricane-related storm repairs. So how this would work is FEMA reimburses towns. So you have to be able to kind of front the money in order to complete the work. And for some areas, Woodfin included, that would be challenging. We just don't have that much surplus cash on hand. Particularly us this year, when we have a large park project under construction. So the loan would be, um, loaned to us at zero percent interest. And as we complete work, we get, we receive the FEMA reimbursement and we turn around, we repay the loan. And we have five years to complete that work, receive the reimbursement and repay the loan. I also heard some promising and encouraging news from FEMA representatives that they're working on expediting the reimbursement process. So instead of waiting several months, it may just be several weeks. So that would also facilitate getting us in good fiscal health. Currently, our storm-related costs are approximately five point seven million dollars. Don't get invested in that number. That number is very likely to change. These are estimates as we prepare and get construction bids to do the work, that number will get more refined. It could go up, it could go down. We don't know yet, but that's our current estimate. And the loans would be approved for only a portion of those costs, not the entirety, because it is an estimate. And we did submit the paperwork to, uh, be considered for this loan. And we did receive confirmation from the state that they received our paperwork and that we are on the list. So, we are still waiting for more information. This, um, not unlike private property debris removal, this is new. And, um, the folks who are administering this program are also kind of figuring things out as we go. As I mentioned, it's a new program, so there's lots to, to figure out, but.
Is there any chance that the, that, the obligation of repayment might be contingent upon us actually receiving money from FEMA?
I would expect so. There, there is, there was some discussion at the forum last week when this was announced that they, um, League of Municipalities is advocating for, uh, forgiveness for any, um, portions that are not reimbursed by FEMA. But that has not been decided.
We may just want to take a hard look at, at the terms of that loan, even if it sounds great. If, if there's a chance that we may still be obligated to pay it if we did not receive FEMA reimbursement. I think we need to take a really hard look at that and talk about that as council.
But that's why those cost estimates too are so important and, and our work, we, we have been working very closely with our project development managers and the other, um, staff. And it, it's been encouraging, especially here in the last month or so, that team seems more stable and it's more solid. So there, the, these team members are starting to get much stronger familiarity with our projects. But that is a good point. Thank you. So that completes my recovery update and moving on to regular town business. Reporting on contracts that we received over the last thirty days, you approved this in your consent agenda and it's not really a new contract. It's really just amendments to the debris removal contract. And just to remind folks, that is not a contract that the town holds. It's actually the state of North Carolina holds that contract. They've awarded the contract to the debris, uh, removal, uh, companies. And then we just sort of sign on with them to get the work completed. We do pay them, uh, as they submit invoices. However, that money was fronted to us by FEMA. So we are using FEMA money to pay for this debris removal work and we anticipate that that FEMA money will cover all of that work. So that's, that's all for contracts. Um, the council strategic plan, our council met back, uh, earlier this month and ironed out some new goals or revised goals and objectives for the, for the strategic plan. Staff, there were a number of action steps that were also assigned to those goals and objectives. Staff is taking another look at that, um, the executive team, I should say, and trying to offer some suggested additional action steps. Some of those objectives had no action steps, others had many. So we're trying to kind of balance it out and offer some ideas for things that could be completed. I hope to present this to you. I expect to present this to you at your meeting in March. And I'll share a draft before that too. We also had a, a nice, uh, visit from Congressman Edwards' office. The Carolina Cruiser visited, uh, Town Hall property, was it last week or the week before? And week before, and we had a, a very good turnout. They were very pleased. They said it was actually the largest turnout that they had ever received. Just standing in line, chatting with people. Uh, I think much of what folks were there to talk about was FEMA-related, but not entirely. So there were a number of other, um, uh, requests that were being shared. But they were so pleased that they are discussing coming back for a second visit. And, uh, we have not ironed out when that would occur, but they seem very interested in doing that. And then also at the request of the congressman's offices, uh, we did submit to them a list of priority projects that included some costs, the scope of work and some other information for, for their reference. And I understand that they've asked the same of all of the municipalities, um, in, in their congressional district. And so we're, um, we're just one of many, but it was nice to be able to put that together and feel like there, um, there was a an ally in the federal government looking out for, for our area. Moving on to the planning and public works departments. For planning, the big news, the big work this week has been the code update reviewing the RFPs that were submitted. So we got a very good response, very pleased with the response. So it took a little while to, to cull through all of the different submissions. We have narrowed that field down to, to three and we are looking to schedule interviews for those three firms. Uh, we've also completed the first draft of the updates to the flood ordinance and we'll be sharing that with council members, uh, in, in April. April. Is that right? Or March?
April.
Yeah, that's right. April, sorry. So little, little more, uh, refinement, I think. And also we want to kind of check in with our, uh, peer municipalities and just kind of see what everybody's thinking. And then we'll be ready to share that with council members in April. And then for public works, it's pretty much business as usual, but, um, our public work staff were called off to do a little additional storm cleanup as we've kind of found some sites. The town, just as one example, the town leases, uh, the old, what we call the old craggy motor properties at, um, fourteen forty-four Riverside Drive, which is just south of our park. And we realized that that site had a lot of silt and sediment on it. So our staff went down there and they, they cleaned that up for us. For stormwater, we completed a stream bank restoration project with the assistance of North Carolina State and Riverlink. So this was a special sort of program that those two entities were interested in. And they worked with our stormwater administrator on identifying a suitable site. And they went ahead and performed that work this week. It's privately owned property. It's not public property. But it was, it was a nice, um, uh, It's privately owned property, it's not public property, but it was, it was a nice project to kind of have as a sort of a, something that we could look forward to seeing more in the future. It just got completed or it's nearing completion. So we'll get some photos and we'll share that with council members in the future. We are also in the process of obtaining quotes for drop inlet cleaning. So all of the drop inlets in the town, so this is system-wide, we've identified those, we know where they are, we know how many there are, and so we're getting quotes for cleaning those. For parks, Riverside Park Expansion Work Project continues. We are, we have completed about 15 to 20% of the fill material removal and about 10% of that has been hauled off. That, that's slow work, so it's going to take a while. And we have 26, we estimate about 26,000 cubic yards of fill that will need to be sorted. They have to sort the material when it comes out. They separate any metal or construction debris of that nature from the soil and then they, they get hauled to different locations. Silverline Park Community Cleanup is scheduled for March 1st and 2nd. The folks who had been doing some storm-related recovery work and had been staging in the site have vacated the park now. And so now it is available for us to go in there and do some cleanup. Some of the initial cleanup has already been performed, such as the silt and sand removal, cleaning off parking lots, things of that nature. But there is just a very large amount of just small plastic debris, plastic bags, other just small bits, just kind of scattered everywhere. And it's the kind of project that a small army of volunteers can really make quick work of. And so we're, we appreciate the work of Mountain True and Ashville Green Works who's helping us, working with our volunteer coordinator to organize these cleanup efforts. The Geneva Mini Community Garden is also coming along. The waterline work was completed. We are waiting for Woodfin Water to complete the tap. And I'm also happy to say that our partners at Woodfin Water agreed to supply the water free of charge and the tap free of charge. So they put an agreement together for that and so that's coming along nicely. And then Roy Pope Park, we have recognized that some of the playground, that the playground equipment is on the older side for playground equipment, but it is so popular, it is so well-used, we don't want to consider replacement. So we're looking at trying to figure out how can we repair some of the kind of rough edges. So in some cases, we have plastic material that's just cracked and it's creating kind of a little sharp corner. We're missing a couple caps to posts, some of the rubber-coated benches and stairs that, that rubberized material is starting to come off. So we're, we're trying to figure out how to approach repairing all of that. In some cases, I think we will have to replace components and in other cases, we may be able to just repair it. And then that leaves us with police. And so that, I'm not going to give you an update on police because we have Chief Boykin here this evening, who's going to move into the annual Woodfin Police Department report.
Does anyone have any questions for our town manager? All right. Thank you. Chief Boykin, we're glad you're here with us tonight.
I did make copies of the slides because I think some of the detail is kind of small and it might be covered for you to see up there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll start off tonight just by saying thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you this evening and give a little rehash about what the police department has dealt with over the last year and a pinch of insight into what we have planned for 2025. I also want to extend my appreciation to the folks who are listening or watching online. It is important to be involved with civic engagement in your community. So for the, for the folks who are out there, I appreciate you being there. So it shouldn't surprise anybody that our mission statement is at the heart of everything that we do, whether it's officers responding to calls for service, us managing administrative tasks within the police department, or the officers being proactive out in the community. It is our mission to work with all citizens to preserve life, maintain human rights, protect property and promote individual responsibility and community commitment. You will hear me repeat that mission statement frequently and you will hear me refer to our core values frequently. They'll probably be at the start of every presentation that I give you because they are so very important to what we do. Our core values should be a decision-making filter for our staff. Our, our, our officers should be thinking, is this action honest? Am I showing integrity? Am I demonstrating compassion for our community? Am I being loyal to this profession and to the people that I serve? Am I demonstrating professionalism in the work that I do? And am I displaying dedication to the community and profession and to the town? So you'll hear these values again and again. So notable accomplishments in 2024, I think the big thing has to be weathering the storm and the response that the police department showed throughout the entire event. In and of itself, the response to the storm was a tremendous feat. But I think it's important for you all to know and for our community to know that your 20-man police department did it with just two-thirds of their staff because they carried about six vacancies for the whole second half of the year in 2024. You may have heard some of the stories about your phenomenal police officers, but I'm going to tell them again. You had a sergeant whose home was severely destroyed with a tree through it, but he was here at work every day and his family was left at home to tend to their emergency. Another who got covered in poison ivy assisting the county with a standoff, but he donned his boots and his ballistic vest every day and continued coming to work. You had a lieutenant who brought his wife and dog to the police station because he knew that he'd be working days in a row. Two lady officers, one, a single mom, who had to be run off from the police department after a week or so because they didn't want to leave the people of this community. And a brand-new hire, working here during his regular shift and at the communications center doing dispatch on his days off. This whole community needs to be proud for what you went through, but you should be exceptionally proud of your police officers who served during that event. In 2024, we made exceptional strides with our career development step and incentive programs. Between August and January, we increased salaries nearly $60,000. This puts us, puts us in a much more competitive position as we're looking at recruiting and it certainly helps as we're looking to retain our officers. And though our program is in its infancy, we're getting telephone calls from other agencies. So we know that it's something that other people are looking at doing. And I will tell you from experience, when they do, all, all the salaries continue adjusting. So when you look at salary assessment, when you look at a step program or incentives, it has to be something that is continually maintained, not just a one-time date. So in 2024, the police department hosted their first awards banquet. Officers were recognized for career achievements, for excellence in service, and most especially, they celebrated their peer-elected Officer of the Year, Ian Bradley. And we will continue with this type of celebration this year in May as we host our second annual or second awards ceremony. So next, the next several slides are going to be data-driven slides. They help to illustrate the officer's work performance and workload in 2024. So the first thing we'll talk about here is calls for service. Calls for service were up 11% from the three-year average. You can see to the right there, and this is a slide that I really printed for you because it's kind of tiny writing there, but you can see what the 10 most frequent calls for service were, were in 2024. I do want to explain that I, I like looking at data over time and I think it's important to evaluate in chunks of time. So I will never just look at last year and say we're up just from last year. I'll look at a, a chunk of time. And I think a three-year block is, is a good way to kind of look at it because you do have those extraordinary events. And so we'll see on a later slide how self-initiated community outreach went really high last year. And I think it's a result of Hailene, but like even with COVID, in COVID, everybody's calls for service went down because we weren't doing traffic stops, we weren't doing community outreach. Police departments everywhere just stopped anything that was self-initiated. So you'll see, when I do compare data, I typically try to look back a couple of years. I think the increase in 2024 has a lot to do with Hailene, some of it certainly, a lot more welfare checks and security checks as a result of the storm, but then things like traffic stops and foot patrols went down during the storm. So maybe offset each other there. Next thing we're going to look at is self-initiated activity. This is something that's very important to me. Several of you, we've had conversations about my philosophy on policing and I think it's really important for officers to be out and engaged in community. Proactive work, it needs to be taking place in between the calls for service. And you can see that in the last couple of years, about a third of their time is spent doing those proactive things. Again, I think it's a key pillar to community policing and I'd like to see these numbers go up in 2025. So crime rate is something that should be important to all of us. Certainly it's a measure of the kind of work that your police staff is doing, but it also come in, comes into consideration when developers are looking at coming here, when residents are deciding whether they want to live here. So crime rate is an important measure to look at. And, and what we have here, Part I crimes are the counts of murder, rape, robbery, assault, burglary, larceny, vehicle theft and arson altogether. And we look at them as compared to populations. So in 2024, we had 11 and a half crimes per thousand people. 8,000 people live here, about 96, about 100, Part I crimes in 2024. And it's fairly consistent with the past three years. What I think is notable is that we're well below the state crime rate of 26 crimes per thousand people. And while I was digging into these numbers, had a look at Asheville. Asheville is 50 crimes per thousand people and Buncombe County had 14 per thousand people. So I think you should be very proud of the community at large and certainly will, will take some credit for it. Blue uniforms take a little bit of credit. Another thing that I think your police department is doing very well is clearing cases. So over the last three years, about half of all cases are cleared. Where they come to a resolution, they either make an arrest or they know who did it, but the victim doesn't want to prosecute. The state average is around 30, 34%. And when you get into Part I crime solving, it's, it's a bit lower, but the, the town is still well above state and national averages for these measures here. So a data point that I think's important to the people who live here, who are calling us for help, is how fast we get there. And the, the trend is going upwards. In the last three years, it's crept up a little bit every time. I think a, a lot of the increase in 2024 had to do with lack of staffing. When you're talking about working with two-thirds of your force, it's certainly going to impact how fast you can get there. Ideally, we really want to be around that four-and-a-half-minute mark. So we have a little bit of work to do, but I think getting blue uniforms on the road will help us do that. All right. So I know that this is something that several of you are very interested in. We'll park here on this slide for just a couple of minutes as we kind of work through it. As you're aware, in North Carolina, police departments who serve a population over 10,000 are required to submit traffic stop reports. But Woodfin began doing that in 2023, though not required to by law. Y'all, I think, encouraged that and they began reporting. So 2024 is the first full year of data with traffic stops for the town of Woodfin. And you can see here on the slide to the left, the big blue area, 91% of our traffic stops were for white individuals. And, and you, on the outside of the circle there is the population. The population data, some was taken from census. There's, or the state demographer, I got information from the state demographer. As it relates to the second slide, you can see that 16% of our traffic stops were for Hispanic individuals. And the population for Hispanics is kind of harder to define. You read different sites or articles and you, the number's anywhere between like eight and 16%. I listed 13% there because I thought it was a fair number. I, I hesitate going with census data. I think you can look at our elementary school and that tells a very strong story about what the reality is here in Woodfin in terms of Hispanic population. So I'm happy to, I think y'all may want to mill on some of this data. You may have some questions. I'm happy to answer any that you do have. But I wanted to show how we relate to the state, just to give you something to kind of draw reference to. So this next slide is all the traffic stops in North Carolina from the agencies that report. And, and not all agencies report. There are several in Buncombe County that don't. So it just gives you a little idea of how we compare to the rest of the law enforcement We did dig, or I did dig a little bit deeper into the traffic stop data. And I'll point out that all of this information, the crime rate data, the traffic stop data is all available for anybody who wants to go look at it on the SBI's website. You can drill down to individual departments, you can look at statewide data. There's a lot, a lot of information out there. And I would encourage you, if you have questions, to go out and take a look at it and, and certainly let me know what, what you would like to see if we're gonna, or when we talk about this in the future. So, but I did dig a little bit deeper into the result of the traffic stops. And you can see that nearly three-quarters of all of our stops result in a warning and it's fairly well, well distributed between race, ethnicity and sex. And then took a dive. And then took a dive into searches subsequent to the stop. So the officer has made a traffic stop and at some point conducted a search on a driver or passenger in that vehicle. This is just drivers here. And you can see here also that the percentages being searched are fairly well distributed between races, ethnicity, and sexes. So I know that there's a good bit of information on the last three. And I'll pause to see if you have any specific questions about traffic stop data because I know that is important to y'all. All right. So the next little bit we'll get into here is community engagement. And this is the slide I referenced a little bit ago. Community engagement went through the roof last year. I really do believe it's a result of all of the outreach that was occurring during the storm. And the feedback that I've gotten from the staff so far was they felt very, I think, committed to this community through all of that emergency, which of course you would expect. But the ownership that the staff took for caring for people during the emergency, I think, is reflected here. And there was a lot of community engagement in 2024. Again, this is something that I think is very important to the style of my thoughts on how policing can positively impact your community. So I'll hope to see very similar numbers next year and maybe even a little bit higher. Next, I'll give just a couple of updates on different programs that you're familiar with. I was ecstatic to see that you had funded an SRO for this year. I think that the SRO position is probably one of the most critical as it relates to developing relationships with our youth. They have access and insight to kids in ways that just traditional policing doesn't. And so I'm excited about having somebody in that role. But the reality is that our staff is exhausted. And we have to get them some relief. And so the focus is going to be getting uniforms on patrol. I realistically believe it will be next school year before we have somebody in place for the SRO's position. And just to throw out, I've been asked, are we going to advertise for an SRO specifically? Or assign it from within? And it really depends on the staff that we have here. If there's somebody genuinely interested in serving in that role, then I would want to give them the opportunity to do so. I think it's vitally important that you have somebody who wants to do that job. So many times I've seen agencies who put the old salty getting ready to retire guy over there who like just doesn't belong, or whoever last got in trouble, they stick him over at the school. And that's just not at all my philosophy. So if we don't have anybody internally who desires career development in that manner, then we will go outside for that hire. So before Kevin Presley was here in an advisory capacity during the interim period, he came and helped the department get rolling with some problem-based learning initiatives. And the staff looked at things like you see here, developing emergency response plans. They looked at recruiting and retention. And I just think this is an absolutely phenomenal learning method. I would love to weave problem-solving into the field training program so that every rookie officer, a young new officer, has to do some sort of problem-solving project to get out of field training. And it's not going to be as massive as these emergency action plans. The presentation for that was really, really good and very in-depth. I wouldn't expect that of a new officer. But it gets them thinking critically about how we improve the community. And so we'll be looking at weaving that into our field training program. The town of Woodfin has been working with other public safety agencies all across Buncombe County in evaluating vendors for a new records management and computer-aided dispatch program. We narrowed the pool to three vendors two weeks ago. And we will be sitting through demos with those three vendors in April. This is a 10 or $12 million project over the next 10 years. And Woodfin will bear some responsibility for that. So I just kind of wanted to put it on your horizon because you'll see it in the budget presentations coming in the next little while. And then lastly, real quick to talk about the Evidence Room project. So I'll share with you that the SBI inquiry is still ongoing. It is not complete or closed. Administratively, we have created some processes and checks and balances to ensure that we're operating under best practices in the property room. Significant to us right now is disposal of evidence. So Buncombe County has experienced some inefficiencies in this, not just Woodfin Police Department, but all the law enforcement agencies. And we're working with the District Attorney's Office right now and the judges to see if we can create some efficiencies that will help police departments dispose of property. So anytime evidence comes in, we have to have a court order to get rid of it. And just making that process roll is, it's not working the way it needs to right now. So we hope to improve that situation. In the last year, we hired three new police officers. This is Matt Murray. Matt spent a little time in Laurel Park. He's also the young man I was talking about who serves as a telecommunicator and was working his off days down at the Communication Center. You met Dmitry Fiskus tonight. Dmitry's got some experience in both Weaverville and Asheville PD. He's also a fireman, has decided to, I don't know. I was going to say something competitive about the fire industry, but I'll just say he's found his home now. And Jennifer Laird, Jen comes to us from Texas. Whole new adventure for her getting into law enforcement. And we're excited to have all three of them. And I can't let the night go by without extending thanks to Kevin Presley. He really did step in when the town needed like someone to hold their hand through a couple of months of work. And he left the police report or offered me at least a good place to step into by what he did over the last six, eight months. So I appreciate him, and I know that the town does as well. And then lastly, just to give you a little bit of insight into some of my personal objectives for the next little while. It's really important for me to get to know this community. And that's going to mean being out of the office some. Couple of days last week was I out talking with different faith leaders in our community. I'll spend time riding with patrol and such. I really, I really need to get to know people on top of like just keeping the police department running. So if you don't find me in the office, I'm probably out meeting a business owner or such. So I think there's some value in reaching out to our faith community. I think they have tremendous insight into the needs of our community and want them to be a partner for us. I also think there are some opportunities with our children during the summer months. So we'll be working on that. But our number one priority has to be staffing. And we've just got to kind of step back and punt and start anew. So new job descriptions were written last week. New flyers, like recruiting flyers were created. And I'll be going out on social media this week. We'll be visiting different community colleges in the area. I'll tell you that one of our employees just here recently worked eight days straight, eight 12-hour shifts straight. And it was like mandated. We had to have somebody here. And that is not sustainable. We are burning them out. And so we've got to get kicking on this recruitment thing right away. So that is our major priority. I appreciate y'all giving me some time tonight and getting to brag a little bit about the police department. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have or take any comments.
Say thank you. We hadn't gotten that level of data breakdown before, and it's really appreciated. Not just seeing that our crime rate is so much lower than the state, but that law that the chief mentioned that requires a reporting, that came about because there was research saying that there were some real inequities happening in policing in the state of North Carolina. Really reassuring to see that that's not present in Woodfin. And so that puts my mind at ease.
It's me too.
And you haven't wasted any time. You've only been here a week, right?
And I appreciate you meeting with each of us, giving us a chance to get to know you a little bit better. And we're excited about what's ahead.
Thank you. So far, so good.
Anybody else have any questions for the chief? All right. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to our second agenda item under new business. And this is a review of the 19-lot major subdivision. And Ricky, we'll let you take it away.
I've been sitting quietly listening. My chance to talk. So yes, you're correct. Councilwoman Urban. So yeah, we have, what Shannon alluded to earlier this evening, an unusual administrative or ministerial review. I believe we've had one of these in front of councils since I've been here. And it's for a major subdivision. And that is anywhere between five and really 19 lots. Because as y'all know, when you get to a 20-lot development or 20-unit development, that is a conditional zoning. So most of what we've been seeing in front of y'all has been those larger developments. In this case, you just basically meet the technical standards for the zoning and subdivision ordinances and the other applicable codes. And we basically, if you check all the boxes, then basically we have to approve it. And this one is, again, it's 19 lots. 2.8 acres in the western side of town next to Crest Mountain across on Ben Lippin Road. I'll come back to the plat here. I'm just going to show you where we're at. So zoning for this area, it's a lot of colors happening. So to the right, that's actually an unzoned portion of Buncombe County. That's east of the town limits, but west of Gorman Bridge Road. To the lower left, that's institutional with the city of Asheville. That's the back half of Alida Holmes' property. To the upper left is the Crest Mountain Development. And that's the villages at Crest Mountain, that small cottage development. And then immediately south, you have some zoned areas of Buncombe County that are R3. And we have a couple little satellite annexations in Woodfin that are R10. And our subject property is actually three little parcels there in the center. Just for, look at the aerial here. You'll see that the predominant land use in this area is a mixture of detached, single-family homes. There are a mixture of manufactured housing, whether it be single-watt or double-watt homes. And then the small-watt development to the north. So it's a mixture of lot sizes. And then our future land use map, we're really looking at the top half of this. It's cluster residential, which is kind of more of a lower density. You want smaller lots to preserve other more sensitive lands. So that's on, really, if you look at our overall map, that's going to be our steep slope areas with our residential one, residential two being a little bit lower down on the slopes in the valley. And so let's go back to the plat here. So there's basically one new road proposed, Road A. That's kind of a fish hook here that will come directly off Ben Lippin Road and kind of move and fish hook back around to the northwest in a hammerhead. The road in that upper-left-handier screen is the existing Destination Drive that accesses the villages at Crest Mountain. The road will not connect. There was an initial proposal to come off of that road. But during our kind of conceptual sketch plans in the first initial part of this process, the neighborhood met with the developer and worked with him to actually come up with this plan. They didn't want that accessing directly off their street. Even if it's a public street, there was concerns about turning movements or backing up at the gate or people coming out and potential crash is what they were voicing to the developer. He agreed to then come up with this layout. Upper right, as you'll see, just kind of like a little bit of a bulb. That's the end of a state road called View Street. There's only one lot proposed to be coming off of it. It's the largest lot in here. It's just over 16,000 square feet. That's Lot 19. And then immediately to the right of that is the open space area. That's got the stormwater pond and some general amenities of a trail that kind of comes around the pond and comes back to Road A so people in the neighborhood can get to that open space area. Three of the lots, four of the lots were actually attached to Ben Lippin Road. We discussed their agreeable to voluntarily limit driveway connections on that, either shared or coming off Road A. So we don't have as many conflict points. That's not a requirement of the code, but they did agree to that. And as far as the remainder of the 18 lots, you're looking anywhere from about 35, about 3,000 square feet to up to 5,000 square feet in size. Those are very small, but again, it's Mount Village. And we have zero setbacks on the front, rear, and sides. And that kind of meets the intent of the cluster development style in the future land use map. Trying to clustering up and also kind of matches up what you've seen with the villages at Crest Mountain. And I kind of mentioned this earlier. So a proposed development is allowed as a use by right in Mount Village. It's up to 19 dwelling units or lots. It's a ministerial review, and we just have to comply with the technical standards. We're not changing the zoning. And the subdivision appears to comply with all our other development code standards. We had this go through the Board of Adjustment, excuse me, Planning Board of Adjustment. They've seen the concept plan. Again, we've seen that kind of modified to the current preliminary plat. They voted to approve that preliminary plat back in their January meeting. And then we will also review again and work with the developer on like the stormwater plan and any other technical requirements, site lighting, if there's pole lights along the street and/or the final plat, making sure it meets, you know, the road width and road, I call it the sandwich, the roadbed thickness for if we dedicate to the public. Just as a side note, it may say planned to be public, but a future public road would still have to be petitioned to this board and be voted to be accepted into our road maintenance system. We just like to get the idea, is the road going to have a public or private maintenance? So if we need to ensure what our future standard is on that. With that, I'm going to pause a moment, see if you have any questions or if we want to invite the applicant up, Mr. Lasher, for any comments or questions by the board.
I don't have a question on this project, but it is strange to me that this comes to us if it's.
Yes.
So are we going to change that?
That's what we.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, it's very strange.
The reason I'm asking that is we don't have any discretion here. There's, and so if the standards are met, it has to be approved. And so that.
Right.
And that did, just as a side note, that did kind of cause a little bit of confusion with the planning board and with the public because they thought there was some discretionary. And so we had to do a little bit of education with the neighbors. The POA at the villages were very good to work with. They were, you know, they're a high-touch residence. And but they were very understanding. And we explained this over and over again about the process. But it can be misleading to someone who has expectations of what this body can do and what you're actually limited by your own code. So yeah.
Flip side of that, though, is we also talked at our retreat about lowering the standard for when we would have conditional zoning. And so maybe at the same time that we're having this not come to us, that might be an appropriate time to bring forward some amendment lowering that threshold as well.
Yes. I could also see just a smidge of value in seeing this before this body just because it gives us a little more insight into where we're building housing. It's just one more piece of the puzzle. Probably could be accomplished more easily, but it's not, it's not a bad thing.
Yeah, there was some value in the conceptual design of that. That's where I think the law. That's where I think the law of the value is, the conceptual feedback and the public having. That's what resulted in this plan was that conceptual process really worked well. Maybe not the preliminary as you're mentioning, uh, but the conceptual does work well. It didn't work out well. Any other questions for me? I don't want to sit here yap. I know we've been here a couple of hours.
No, I noticed that we have a suggested motion in the staff report. Do we even need to do that based on this type of review?
I think because y'all are actually the approval body in the ministerial review, it's not actually me. I'll be doing the, me and Maria will be doing the final plat, I think in this case.
And then does this even require a hearing?
No, there's, because it's ministerial, it's not even open for the public hearing. So, so I did, like I said, we mentioned that staff was recommending that it be approved and, uh, we'll work with some minor touches on the final plat we get there about closing the right of way, which applicant understands, we have to come through this body if we were to ever close that.
I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
Just to be annoying, because you know, that's how I am.
So for the applicant or for me?
Uh, either one, um, the lighting. Are we mindful of the lighting?
Absolutely. We will be working, we will be working on the lighting. You know, we're requesting that during our technical review. So as we get into the lighting or then the road portion and we get into construction, we'll look at all that to ensure that it's all cut off and it meets our, you know, lighting standards, what we have in our code.
Thank you.
And we'll work on placement too.
The neighbors say thank you.
Any other questions?
Does this make a comment?
Yes.
My name's Reese Lasher. I live in Weaverville. I'm not an out of town developer unless you consider Weaverville out of town. And I'm also your developer for Crest Mountain and the villages at Crest Mountain and have an LLC called Brook Green. And so I'm all over the place. But I would point out to you one, one thing, this is designed to be an affordable project. Um, that was the purpose originally. Formerly was a mobile home park that had a lot of bad history that chief would be out there inspecting people for. But this is a way to clean it up and make it match up with what we're doing at the villages without having to incur a lot of the costs that they incur with dews, gates. We do green building there, things like that. So the whole idea was to complement, but not to be at the higher price level. And then we also ultimately want to get rid of the word desperate lane. Just being totally honest with you that, uh, we, we, we understand the process through statute. Counselors is that, uh, the property owners on both sides share equally. Well, in this case, it happens to be me and both sides. And so definitely would want you to know that that is coming, that desperate lane will go desperately away in the future. And I'd appreciate your help with that. Any questions for me? I'm glad to help. We're glad to be part of Woodfin and all that, uh, we can do. And Chief, I would like you to come and take the tour. I'll give you a personal tour. I'm glad to do that as well as anybody here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I got the suggested motion up there for you.
I moved to approve the preliminary subdivision plat for 2.8 acres as shown and find that it complies with all applicable technical, applicable technical requirements subject to the conditions identified by staff.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have anything in closed session? So we only need one more motion then, unless someone else has anything. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All right. Have a motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Great meeting. Progress. Yay, you did.
All right, guys, I will be back.
You're a natural.
Uh, Iceland. And I'll be back on, in town on the 3rd of March, but I'll have my.
Unless you just like.
Okay.
I've been to Reykjavik for about two and a half days, but this is going to be the whole.
There you go.
Whole audience. So I'm excited.